But would like to call this meeting in the Board of the Trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust to order. Hope everyone is doing well. Happy August already. So, first item on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. We had a lot, had a lot going on. So, I'll put it first maybe out to board members to see if there was any comments on any of the meeting minutes. Maybe we'll start with the regular session meeting minutes too. I know there was a lot, but I'll just start there.
And all are good to me.
I had just, first of all, thank you Doug for putting all of these together. It's a lot of work and these were great. I had a couple very minor things, but that didn't feel nitpicky, so I wanted to just mention that. So, on the June 3rd minutes. So, I think Jesse dropped off the meeting before we adjourned, which happened in one of the other meetings and you made a note of that. After the vote, so just wasn't sure if we wanted to include that note here as well.
Yep, I will do that. Yep, okay. All right.
Hang on, on June 3rd.
Yep, June 3rd, got it, yep. Okay. Anything on the 17th of June or the 10th? Are you good? Everything else was good?
Nothing on the 17th. The 10th looked good too.
And then I think we had the 14th as well of July.
So, on the 14th, again, just minor, in the motion, starting on line 30.
Yep.
And so it should be motion by Mr. Hamilton to approve instead of approved.
Yep, great comment, got it.
And then seconded by Mr. Desmond.
Oh, yeah. Good call.
And then the vote to approve, five yes.
Yes. I was just adding to the committee.
Anyone's interested.
That is great. Thank you. Thank you for reading through them. I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for, for doing them.
All right, so let me go back.
Let the record show, I read them but didn't catch any of that.
It's so noted.
All right, so let me get back to. All right, so then, so we'll take this in order. Do I have a motion to approve and adopt the regular meeting minutes? As noted with just the amendments from Ellen for 6.3, 6.17, 7.10, and 7.14.
So moved.
Second, okay, awesome. All right, all in favor? Al?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
And Doug is aye. All right, great. Right. Okay, and then we had three executive session meeting minutes. The, the 10th, the 14th, and the 23rd. And so, first just ask and see if there is any comments on those three.
No.
Right, so then I will say, do I have a motion to approve and retain the executive session meeting minutes for July 10th, July 14th, and July 23rd?
I think the question is, should we release them? The matter is moot at this point.
Yep.
Well, not entirely. We might want to do this, well. All but the 23rd mentions another item that might still be viable.
Okay.
So the 23rd, I would agree, we can approve and release.
All right, so I'll move that we approve and release the 23rd minutes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Al?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
All right, and Doug is aye. All right, and then do I have a motion to approve and retain the meeting minutes from July 10th and July 14th for executive session meetings?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Al?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, just checking, yeah, okay, so just us, no, just yet. All right, so so new business. Might just go to first item, Housing Production Plan recap, and maybe Ellen, I'll turn it over to you, you know, just, just opportunity for us to debrief.
Sure, thank you. I'm so looking through my email now to see when it actually went in, but the Housing Production Plan was submitted and EO HLC acknowledged that it was received, so that was August 4th. So, we incorporated just a few a few minor changes after the meeting with Planning Board and Select Board that were all technical changes, nothing that changed really the any thing of substance in terms of the strategies or goals that we talked about, but you know, Mimi had a couple notes about how certain parcels are being classified, how we were counting things, so all factual pieces that we worked through with Mimi and Karina and Sarah Brent, so that went in, and so there's usually, it takes a few weeks, maybe a month or two for each L C to review these. I don't know if that moves more slowly in the summer. But we will stay on top of, yeah, anything that, that comes back, but that is out the door.
Awesome. Thank you for that recap. Yeah, exciting to hopefully hear shortly about the approval of it, but again, just want to, Ellen, want to thank you and Jesse for you know, taking the lead on it and, you know, felt, you know, pretty amazing how quickly it went through the process and thought it was a great joint meeting too as well with the Select Board and the Planning Board, so just want to say thank you for that. It's great to have it actually out.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm happy with, with how it came together, so thank you.
Okay. If no other comments or questions on that, I think the next topic of discussion is the discussion of elimination or modification of the Senior Housing Unit zoning cap. And I believe Planning Board does have a meeting on this next Monday. I believe, right, correct? I'm not messing that up on the, is it next, yeah, on the 18th? I believe that's the case.
That's what I had down. I don't think I'd seen it posted yet. But that's what, yeah, was on my calendar, and I think that fits their usual schedule.
Yeah, and I believe I've already posted, but I will, I believe I already posted for this. So, I will not be able to attend. I'm going to be out on vacation, traveling on that day, but you know, definitely encourage any of you guys to attend. I think it's a, it's a great item. But I might just open up to the floor, because you know, I think, maybe just to spark the discussion, it seems like there's a, there's a two-way discussion about it. One is just simply eliminating the cap altogether, right? And the other is potentially raising the cap, and so you know, just curious what the committee members feel about that, because I do think it might be good to, you know, if there is a unified approach to it, you know, relaying that to the Planning Board on Monday.
I'm in favor of eliminating it, but you know, I'll take half of it if I can't get the whole thing. And the I can't make it on the 18th either, I'm taking a small vacation. But yeah, I think, I know that they will have to have a formal public hearing because it's a zoning bylaw. So that, you know, it needs to get posted and there's a whole bureaucracy associated with it, but I think that is I think, you know, hopefully someone from, from the committee can attend and support it, I think that would be terrific.
Yeah, I should be able to be there, probably virtually, but I'm planning to attend and had a chance to meet with Marnie, I want to say last week, and we're having another conversation tomorrow to try and work through this, and so the language that she's been working on eliminates the cap, and so we can, we're checking in tomorrow morning, so I'll follow up with all of you after that happens, if there's a draft of what she'll be bringing to the rest of the board on Monday. So in addition to removing the cap outright, the other pieces of the bylaw that we've been looking at, there's a section on density that is a little bit convoluted, kind of measures density exclusive of a certain percentage of wetlands, that seems to be a way that density is not measured anywhere else in the bylaws. And also caps density at a maximum of three units per acre, exclusive of those wetlands, so I think we've been looking at that as well as the potential for some affordability inclusionary zoning essentially, and so that piece obviously is a little bit more complicated, but there's some good, good resources from Westboro, which passed inclusionary zoning, not just for senior housing, but for their general zoning bylaw last year. Upton has been looking at this as well, so I think kind of what we're thinking is that if, you know, this bylaw is going to be looked at, it would be great to kind of clean up as many pieces of this as possible, and I know the affordability section is something that came up when we talked to Planning Board on the Housing Production Plan. But I think that the, if that is kind of biting off more than we can chew, like you said, I'll give them the process, the public hearings between now and Fall Town Meeting, I think we can have the conversation of let's just focus on the Senior Housing Cap for now, or spending a little more time on it and, you know, working towards a Spring Town Meeting.
What is the inclusionary zoning? What, what's that all about?
So, when we had that conversation about the Housing Production Plan, I think it was Lisa who brought up that it would be ideal if you know, there was basically, if we're saying a certain percentage of any units that are built under this bylaw need to be affordable. And the bylaw right now has kind of a vague a vague language that evidence shall be shown that to the greatest extent possible the development is offering to provide for the needs of Southborough residents of varying economic levels. That really doesn't provide much guidance or put any sort of requirements in place, so what other communities have done is say, really specifically, if you are building housing under this type of bylaw, or in some communities under, you know, any sort of multifamily housing, X percent of units have to be affordable at Y percent of AMI, another percent at another tranche of AMI. So being really clear, and there are, you know, over a certain number of units that this kicks in. So this is a little bit more complicated, and so that's why we've been looking really closely at what other towns have done. Westboro did a pretty extensive economic feasibility analysis, which is crucial here. I know we talked a little bit about this during the Housing Production Plan, that kind of an overall inclusionary zoning bylaw really needs a lot of that economic feasibility analysis to make sure that you're not making development impossible, given how expensive it is. But the, the thought was to potentially try and clarify that really vague piece with something a little bit more specific.
Got it, thank you.
The one comment I'd offer is, to the extent that you're trying, we're trying to achieve multiple different goals, I would break them up into bites. I would not I would not do it as an omnibus zoning thing. Leave each one as its own thing, because what you don't want is something that might prove to be controversial, and you never know it's going to be controversial on the floor at town meeting. Torpedo everything.
Yep, that makes sense.
So, I mean, I think in terms of, you know, my thoughts, so first of all, I'm definitely in favor of simply eliminating it, right, and it's great to hear the Planning Board is going that route, you know, I just don't see the need for an arbitrary cap necessarily, right? That's kind of one. I definitely think three units per acre seems extremely low, per se, right, and so I don't necessarily have a alternative, you know, comment as to what it should be, but it'd be great to see what Marnie and the Planning Board thinks, you know, but it's just, you know, it's just low, you know. And then Ellen, I do agree, you know, this whole taking the wetlands out, you know, type of thing, or funky definitions, just doesn't seem you know, it seems complicated and not just, it just doesn't seem appropriate, you know, type of thing, but you know, because again, I think as we all discussed, at least from this committee's group, like, this is an important component of housing production, right? Doesn't create school-aged children too as well, and it's a housing type we just don't have, right, and so you know, to have some more compact units, you know, you know, at a little better density, you know, for seniors, I think is, is just great, you know. So I'm, I'm a big fan of that, so it's great to hear the Planning Board is that, but I would suggest, at least from my perspective, three units per acre is just, is not that's just more NIMBYism as opposed to, you know, trying to promote housing. I'm not suggesting 15 either, like the MBTA Communities Act, right, that's probably the other extreme, but you know, I think it should be a bit more. And then, in terms of affordability, I don't agree with Al, right, this might be a great question for Marnie too as well, but you know, I think it makes a lot of sense that, you know, and again, you did say it's a great comment about how you know, economic development analysis or impact analysis may need to be done, but I mean, it makes sense that as we pass new zoning, like the standard of 10%, so we just stay pace, you know, I think just makes a lot of sense. You know, just 10% overall. I also know some other towns, whenever there's, and not even so much a minimum, but you know, if you end up with like partial units, right, some towns have done actually a payment into the Affordable Housing Trust, right? So if you end up with some random 5.3 number, you know, point three, you know, is times some factor that can go as a payment, right, so developers don't get caught in this, well, if you're 5.3, you only do five, but if you're 5.6, you gotta do six, like, it's just becomes funky, but but to Al's point too, that might be too much to bite off on. You know, but so anyways, but I think that's just something too where you know, it's a good way for us not to fall behind. If we suddenly do create another 100 senior housing units across the entire town, you know, we don't want to have to suddenly have to try to make up 10 units. You know, and I do think it's economically feasible at 10%. I would oppose anything over 10, because then I just think you're just getting back into, well, you're not going to get any housing. So so anyways, yeah, I'm excited the Planning Board's looking at it with no cap. That to me is, is definitely important, you know. So those are at least, those are my thoughts on that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate that, that insight, and so yeah, I'll be talking to her again tomorrow. I believe she's had the chance to talk to Mimi about this as well, but the real conversation will be Monday, so yeah, I can share out the draft that she's been working on after she and I meet tomorrow, but we'll bring back all of these thoughts and, yeah, make sure that we can at least move forward with removing the cap, see if we can clarify that density piece. That just seems like a strange thing to have in here and nowhere else. And think about, yeah, I like that approach Doug of just a simple 10%, you know, it keeps pace. We can put in like the actual AMI that we'd be targeting. Yeah, I don't know if I probably, like, 80%.
Yeah, I think, I think that keeps it less complicated too, and again, it's up to 80, right, you know. And, you know, that just seems, you know, appropriate. I mean, I just know the towns do like, you know, half at 80, half at 60, but it's just sometimes, you know, you're, you're over prescribing, right? It's almost like, you know, I don't know, keep it simple sometimes.
Yep. Perfect. Great, thank you. So I'll relay all of this to Marnie and, yeah, check back in.
And quick question, what is the town meeting date again for this fall? Has it been set? I think it has been set.
I believe it's the 27th of October. They had to get pushed up a week, because apparently there was a conflict with the previously scheduled use of the hall. Okay, I believe it's the 27th, so it's end of October.
Okay, great.
Which is startlingly close.
Yes, it, it suddenly does. One of my recommendations, I'm sure the committee would consider is obviously, is once we, there is some final language, besides obviously attending the Planning Board, definitely thinks it makes a lot of sense for, you know, this board to, you know, review it and vote in favor of it, just to show our support, you know, to the, as it goes to town meeting, so I can make sure it's on the, just keep this generally on the agenda for the next two meetings. You know, so, and once we see we're ready, that might be something great to do.
It might also be desirable to hold a couple of meetings with things like the Domences Club or other civic groups to explain why. I, I think there's a good reasons for it. I, I don't think it's particularly complicated, but I think reaching out and explaining to particularly this, the senior community, who I think would be in favor of this, would be something I think we should do, either a one-off or as a formal meeting.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and again, even if not formal, a couple of us, right, to go to certain meetings and you know, definitely show support and explain. I think that's a great idea, again, you know. This is definitely, I think, one of the key things that, that came out of the Housing Production Plan, and honestly, we've been talking about it a while, even at back at Shopsey, right, so big fan of that, Al. Okay. Any other thoughts or comments on this topic? So the next item is just again, one of those open topics, which is just the discussion of potential strategies for affordable housing. You know, so on this one, I might just put out there, so and again, you know, have to think about how we approach this, but I definitely think, you know, now, especially when the HPP gets approved, again, applying it through the one-stop, maybe search for some funds for part-time staffing. You know, again, there's so much, I think, that is in the, you know, Housing Production Plan, that I think for us, it's just as volunteers is going to be very challenging really to kind of pursue. And I know that Shopsey did this, but it was before my time, because when I came on, they already had temporary staffing help. Al, I don't know, I don't really think there's any capacity within existing staff, right, to really support us, so I think the only option.
Yeah, not as currently organized.
Yeah.
Yeah, the sorts of things I think we would need would be you know, the only place where that might exist would be in the planning department, and that doesn't report through the Select Board and yeah, you know, that, and I don't think there's I don't think there's a lot of enthusiasm for adding headcount right now, particularly, it is likely that the town is going to have to ask for two and a half override in the spring. So you know. I, I think the wall is going to be carefully watched for at least the, the next budget cycle. I, I think, I actually have a slightly different, so there's the, if we did the one-stop, you know, we'd be basically, the next round, I think, happens basically next spring and it'd be about a year before we heard anything. Unless, unless somebody knows more about one-stop than I do, which is not hard to do.
I do not, I just know that, you know, funds are available, right, you know. And it's, it's come through before, so again, it could be, I mean, even if it's next spring, I think it's definitely something still worth pursuing. You know, but Al opens your other suggestions about what we do in the interim, if there are thoughts about you know, how we approach this just generally. You know, or again, go ahead.
When I talked to Town Council about the transaction I wanted to do that we discussed in, in executive session. They kept, they asked me, and this is the second time they asked, why don't you do an RFP? And I think maybe we ought to look a little bit at doing an RFP where we say, you know, the, we're looking for proposals for to expand the, the, the stock of affordable housing in the town of Southborough and send that out to real estate agents, to the developers, maybe to the large landowners in town. Publish it in, in some form or another, and see if somebody has an idea that we haven't thought about, and you know, I mean, I think we could certainly make it clear that, you know, we have financial resources at our disposal and we are looking for proposals. We don't have to accept any of them, but you know, so far, we've been sort of out pushing our ideas, maybe somebody would like to push their idea on us for a change.
Yeah, definitely. I'm definitely open to that discussion, right, or that, you know, opportunity. It has become clear now, because I think we've been reached out by, and we'll talk about this in executive session. Now, at least three different homeowners have reached out, right, with potential of seeing if we would buy their, their home. Right? And so, all I say is, that's good news, right? It's definitely clearly that is getting out, and then I didn't read the letter yet, but looked like there was another letter that came in today. I just sent it around to you guys that also had that concept in it, you know. You know, so so one, just saying more, putting that out, that's definitely something that, you know, we should spend time on. And I'm definitely open to other thoughts about, you know, putting an RFP out there. Maybe another thought. And again, even RFP takes time, right, to write it and have expertise to do it. You know, we do have funds, right? I mean, so the other option could be is do we send an RFP out for, you know, an hourly rate of some, you know, group, you know, again, like we just went through with Community Scale, or somebody that can help advise us and like you know, get, you know, I don't know, call it average of two hours a week. I don't know what the right timeframe is, but almost seek a proposal that is advisory that can join our meetings and, you know, then spend, you know, five or six hours in a month, you know, so and again, you know, I know some going rates can be anywhere from 150 to 200 bucks an hour, sometimes lower, maybe 100 bucks, but you know, for 20 or 30 grand, we could potentially get part-time support, right? That just helps us through this, but I mean, that's just something to think about too as well, so that might be another option. Until we get to the one-stop, right? That could be something else too, just to bridge the gap. But just even thinking about like us trying to figure out how to apply for the one-stop, right, you know, you know, put it together. And Al, to your point, just even trying to put an RFP out, right? You know, having almost like an advisor to us, you know, using our funds could be very helpful, so that might be I mean, Al, as you said, we have this money, we haven't really used it, but that could be a good way for us to pursue some of these HPP stuff, or even again, if we do find a home and let's say, Al, like, like the one we're going to be, like, there's more than an acre, you know, we probably need to put out an RFP out to even nonprofits, right, even if we're looking at Habitat, right, just from a, you know, public, you know. So, that might be a way of doing it where, you know.
Let me, let me see, let me talk to the town administrator and tell him, you know, we, we're thinking about maybe doing an RFP. And let's first see if there's some internal resource, so we do RFPs all the time.
Yep.
In, in town, so let's, let me see if there's somebody free, I'm sorry. I've, I've got my, I'm a Scottish heritage, which means, you know, that I have deep pockets and short arms. Let me see if there's some internal resources we could use to at least help us get started, and then if, you know, we need to go to outside expertise, we, we can. So, I'll, I'll take the action item to talk to the town administrator and I know Melanie in his office does RFPs all the time, so this may be a very straightforward thing, and it may not. If, if either of you guys have seen, could ask whether you've seen examples of that sort of thing, that would, I think, you know, I know Doug and Ellen, you're connected in this world the way I'm not. If you could ask, you know, whether you've got examples of sort of broad spectrum RFPs that other communities have done.
Yeah, so I can definitely look into that, and one other thing to add to this is that there is technical assistance available for free, from places like MHP where I work, or from MAPC, I'm a regional planning organization to offer either kind of general technical assistance. Or MHP as well has intensive technical assistance specifically for Or MHP as well has intensive technical assistance specifically for affordable housing trusts. And so I think that could offer the type of support you were talking about, Doug, where it's someone who can. Spend a couple hours, join our meetings, do some of this work, because I think. Yeah, I think helping us focus in now on, you know, we have all of these strategies. How do we move them forward? What do we prioritize? I know we've talked a lot with these different property opportunities that have come up about kind of how are we. Judging these if there are, you know, good opportunities, someone who can kind of help us think through. How we make those decisions and move forward and potentially don't even have to spend money on that. So if that's something people are interested in, I can definitely look into the process of applying for.
It'd be terrific. Yeah, yeah, I think, and again, I think, and and Al, just, you know. We almost need, I mean, my gut is we almost need advisory before we even know what kind of RFP to send out, right? You know, it's like honing us in a little bit, but, you know, if MHP has this, that would be awesome. You know, I also know, and this is where we all start to get into trouble, right? But but Lara Davis, you know, which was part-time with ZBA now is full-time, right? You know, and I think she's covering a couple of stuff. I'm not suggesting she has capacity. Or Melanie, but even just someone that has a little bit of time until we can get, you know, MHP or something on board. But I think MHP is great, because obviously, Ellen, that sounds very specific to us. And, you know, if that carries us through, so we can figure out what kind of RFPs, whether it's technical assistance, you know, through the one stop or something else. I think that's great, good efficient use of resources, so. Yeah, that's, I appreciate that, and that'd be awesome. I just, I think, because otherwise I feel like we're. You know, it's great news we got through the HPP, but I definitely feel like we need now some counseling or advisory to help us, you know, okay, how do we attack the next level of items?
Yep, agreed. Thank you. Yep, so I'll I'll follow up on those and, yeah, find out what we might be able to do.
You know, can we also just sort of have a discussion on on what our vision is? Because, I mean, I can tell you my vision is is more than, you know, just trying to acquire a house here and there. I mean, I would love to see us do a real development, you know, some number, I don't know, say twenty units for the sake of argument. And, you know, I I think this advisor we've been talking about would would certainly be a help there, but it strikes me that we almost need. Like a PR campaign to to sort of spread the word that we want to do this. And that there's a number of avenues I think we could go down, or probably all at once. To get contributions, you know, there's like people in town who are aging out and they just. They want to move, maybe their kids don't want or need the house, and, you know, they don't need the money, and I mean, there are people like that. And, you know, they'd be willing to make a contribution, property or or money. Or or other people that just, you know, they they like the town, they want to leave a legacy, so they're willing to contribute money, you know, things like that. And just, again, the like PR, just to spread the word, you know, we're here, we're we're looking to do something. And I think we could, we need help defining what that something is, but. So something along those lines. I mean, that's what I would love to see. I don't know if I'm alone here, but.
No, also Paul, I can say from my, I think that's great, you know, you know, whether we call PR, but also listening to, you know, kind of campaign, right? But, you know, again, we're probably in our sixth or seventh meeting, maybe more. And, you know, Sam is always the true believer with us the whole time. But, you know, not a lot of people are showing up, right? And so, but yeah, no, but I think that would be great, and I think you're right too, Paul, like, I think we're getting a sense of. You know, the target, if we're going to own a home or a couple affordable units, what we want to be in it for it on a per unit basis. But this kind of goes back to when Maury was at Shopsey, but we talked with a couple affordable housing developers and they were like, you know, give us a piece of land and give us twenty or thirty thousand. Per unit, and we can go do that twenty units, right, type of thing? And, you know, now that piece of land could be our entire existing trust fund, right? You know, because we don't know how much land we'll go for. But if you're twenty or thirty thousand per unit and you're twenty units, well, that's four or five hundred thousand, so suddenly, Paul, to your point, like. You know, that means that could be something very feasible, you know, so. You know, so I I think it's great for us to almost, like you said, we need a little bit more advisory to figure out. What are the options and, you know, what does it cost for those options as well? And also, like you said, you know, Paul, understanding. How people feel about some of those options too, as we go through this, but yeah, I think. I I agree. I mean, I don't think we want to just do this for one unit. That's very clear. I also think we very clearly heard that from the CPC as well, right? And that's not our goal, right? But, but again, is is our goal, we end up with only three units and we spent a million, right? Or is there something else that might be able to be a bit more impactful? That's that's definitely a a great discussion to have.
Okay, I I think there's also a discussion to be had with the town and here. I mean, I look at this as an investment. If the town was to spend money to create more housing. Isn't that an investment? Because you're creating taxpayers, you know, you're creating tax generating properties. And yes, you're also providing services to those properties, but I don't think it's a one-to-one kind of thing, you know, that. But I don't know, I I could be looking at it all wrong.
The typical single-family house in town is probably. From a cash flow perspective, over time, a money loser. You know, it's it's no secret why, I mean, the education is expensive and we would value education. The however, senior housing is a cash cow. And, you know, which is another good reason to promote senior housing and it it has sort of a knock-on effect. Of, you know, if I move into a senior unit, my four-bedroom house becomes available. And it's not going to be bought by another senior, it's going to be bought by a family with 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 kids.
Which, right.
That's, that is the sort of community I think we want to live in, you know, is is one that has a healthy mix of of ages.
What about a multifamily units like we're talking about here, though? And it could be, it could be mixed too, like, you know, Ellen, I I went to your your conference, not this past one, but. The year before and there was a development. I forget what town. North Shore somewhere, I think, where it was mixed, you know, older folks and younger folks and everybody loved it. You know, they, you know, people have this idea that the old folks don't want to see kids, but they do.
Who else are you going to tell to get off my lawn?
Yeah, so so Paul, on that point, I think, so first of all, you know, staying the senior housing angle for a second. You know, again, first of all, that's tax accretive, right? As already Al has said, right? Even if it's affordable, right? You know, potentially. You know, the other thing too is there is Colonial Gardens, not suggesting, you know, like, there could be a densification strategy or something. I do know nonprofits that do senior, you know, affordable as well too. You know, and again, that also could resonate really well with the, you know, with, you know, the residents, right? And, you know, so anyways, but, you know, that that could be something else, where remember, we've looked at the the South Union School, the school, the old school building on the south side of town. By Saint Matthews. You know, and definitely seemed to be a lot of concern from a lot of residents about that being affordable housing, but it could be very different if it's a senior affordable housing, right? You know, type of thing. And, you know, and the ability that if there is some town land. And then team up with an affordable housing developer and it's a fifty-five plus affordable. You know, that that could be a further win-win, right? So less burden on the town and definitely fills a need. I mean, we need affordable for all types, right? And the. Good point, the, I think part of the justification too is the chapter forty Bs are already supplying affordable for just the general segment of population, right? It's age agnostic, right? And, you know, twenty-five percent of those units will be affordable. And all we really have is Colonial Gardens as affordable today. And so that could be a really good strategy as we think about this. You know, and again, this is why I love actually going back to MHP a little bit, like, this is definitely, like, this is the kind of brainstorming, you know, and also what some of them like to talk about. Because that might lead us to say, well, I I think right now it'd be great to talk to an affordable housing developer that just does senior housing or does senior housing affordable to. You know, is that different? I mean, like, because if it's the same type of approach, you know, land and some amount of, you know, per unit subsidy. That could be very compelling for the town residents to hear that versus just a straight affordable, like, again, not that. I'm in favor of either, but just trying to think about how we go through this, so. You know, and trying to think about how we can use some existing city property, which would really, or town property that really let, you know, I think it's a great way to leverage faster into something versus. As you know, because we're always waiting, we're waiting for that perfect parcel, and then by the time we figure it out, it's gone.
Right, right.
Well, I I, so I have a bad idea, which we can discuss in executive session, which might move us in that direction.
No bad ideas, Al.
Oh, no, I have lots of them. Talk to my wife. I I I got, I got about a five percent success rate, but I make it up in volume.
But but I definitely, so Paul, in terms of your vision, I definitely agree with it. I definitely think this is great for us to continue to talk about what the options are. But I'm very intrigued with something that's a bit more denser, right? The twenty units or so. That is maybe more senior focused and affordable. Because I think that would resonate, because there's a lot of, you know, people have been in town for a very long time and, you know, they're different economics than some of the more current newer residents, so. And that's something that would be, like you said, going, that's a true investment for the town into its residents, right? Long term, right? Something like Colonial Gardens, it's hard to create those, so once you do, it's such a unbelievable asset for the town and its residents.
Okay, glad to hear.
So I think, I mean, I think we have some great action points, so Al, you're going to follow up with towns to see what kind of resources might just generally be available for RFPs. Alan, you're going to follow up with MHP and maybe MAPC, particularly MHP about, you know, see if we get into a program or something that we could have some real advisory. Yeah, and I think we continue, and you'll go from there. All right. So I think the next really is to go into executive session, because again, that's really the next bullet point anyways. Are there any other topics before we go into executive session? Okay, it looks like Sam just dropped off two as well, so I I'll read this. All right, so seven forty-nine PM. All right, the board will be entering into. Executive session per MGL chapter thirty A, the section twenty-one, and not returning to open session. To discuss potential property acquisition exemption number six, as the chair determined that an open meeting may have an eventual mental effect on the town's position. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right, all in favor, Al?
Aye.
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Doug is aye. All right, great, we are moving to executive session, so give me a second.